I'd like to call this Village Board meeting of August 6th, 2020 to order. Would the Clerk please take the role?
President Jackson?
Here.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Trustee Sullivan?
Here.
Trustee Light?
Here.
Trustee Maritato?
Here.
Trustee Poczek?
Here.
Trustee Schroder?
Here.
Would you all please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? The Pledge of Allegiance to the Father, of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I think we're ready to start with you, Mary.
I don't know where am I?
Oh, you're starting with me? Oh.
Yep.
Golden Sheer Salon is now accepting appointments at the Center for Senior Citizens. We offer services for both men and women, including haircuts, coloring, and perms. We also offer free consultation so we can help you look and feel your best. At this time, we can only accept reservations. Walk-ups will not be permitted. Please note, the Golden Sheer Salon follows the Illinois Department of Public Health Guidelines, which includes face coverings and hand sanitizer. To book your next hair appointment, please contact the Center for Senior Citizens at (630) 260-6050. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mary. Trustee Poczek?
The Village of Glendale Heights remembers Patriot Day on Friday, September 11th, with a silent parade of our first responder vehicles, followed by a candlelight service at 7:15 PM. In order to properly social distance ourselves due to COVID-19, the Patriot Day ceremony will be held at Camera Park at the flagpoles. Face coverings are encouraged. Please join Mayor Jackson, our Village Board of Trustees, police and fire personnel, neighbors and friends, as our community comes together for a moment of silence and reflection on Patriot Day and we remember those who lost on September 11th, 2001. For more information, please call the Mayor's office at (630) 909-5303. Thank you.
Thank you, Chester. Trustee Maritato?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
We are pleased to announce that the GH2O Aquatic Center is open for the season. Registration for a two-hour time slot is available online or by calling the Sports Hub during their adjustable adjusted business hours at (630) 260-6060. Fees for each time slots are $4 for residents and $8 for non-residents. Free registration is required. Our registration team is available Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and Saturday from 8:00 AM to noon. Due to the current COVID-19 epidemic, the GH2O Aquatic Center will be operating at a limited capacity and under the strict guidelines and recommendations set forth by the Illinois Department of Public Health in Phase 4 of the Restore Illinois Plan. For more information, please call the Sports Hub at (630) 260-6060. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Clerk Schmidt?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Today, more than ever, blood donation is needed for those struggling for their lives. Now is your chance to help by donating through the Glendale Heights Blood Drive, being held on Tuesday, August 11th, in the Glendale Heights Police Department's Training Room. Appointments are encouraged by visiting our website at www.glandalehighs.org or contacting Tanya Mako at (630) 909-5459. All donors will have to pass a COVID-19 health screening prior to giving blood, and a mask or face covering is required. Thank you.
Thank you, Marie. Trustee Light?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Join us Saturday, October 3rd, from 10:00 AM to noon for Coffee with the Mayor and Village Board at the Center for Senior Citizens. Please note, there is no coffee with the Mayor and Village Board in September due to Labor Day holiday weekend. If you're unable to attend and have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the Mayor or Village Board, please call the Mayor's office anytime at (630) 909-5303. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Trustee Sullivan?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Glendale Lakes Golf Club is open for golf season. Come on out with your foursome and spend a day on the greens. To ensure everyone's health and safety due to COVID-19, Glendale Lakes will only be allowing tee times with 12- to 15-minute intervals. No walk-ups will be allowed, and you must book your tee time in advance. To book your tee time, visit www.glandalehighs.com or call the pro shop at (630) 260-0018. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Trustee Schmidt?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
The Glendale Heights Police Department is hosting their 23rd Annual Citizens' Police Academy, beginning Wednesday, September 2nd. The Citizens' Police Academy gives participants a realistic view of police work by providing instruction and education on real-life police trainings, arrests, self-defense tactics, firearm safety, and more. Enrollment is free and open to citizens 18 years of age and older who live or work in Glendale Heights. Applications for enrollment can be downloaded and printed from the Village website. For more information, please contact the Police Department's non-emergency number at (630) 260-6070. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. First thing, we have one proclamation tonight, and that is a proclamation to proclaim August 1st through 31st, 2020, as Wyland Mayor's challenge for water conservation. So if there are no objections?
No.
I will sign the proclamation. Next, we have Parks and Rec Director Keith Knouts.
And? Thank you, Mayor, for giving me the opportunity here. I've got Doug Fair here from Hitchcock Design Group, and we wanted to give you a brief update as to where we are with the Camera Park improvements. And so I'm going to turn this over to Doug. Doug and I are both doing it, and we'll kind of go from there. But I'm going to let Doug start.
Thanks, Keith, and thanks for having me back here. Happy to discuss or continue discussions on this exciting project. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to give an overview on where we're at in the design process, kind of where we've been, where we're at currently, and then the next steps from here. With that, I'll launch into presentation, the agenda real quick. As you see up here, master plan update, kind of an overview with the OSLAD plan, design development progress, give an update on the playground equipment, challenge course equipment, and outdoor fitness equipment that was selected, the chosen restroom building, and then we'll end with a discussion on the recirculating splash pad. So this is the master plan update that was completed last fall, an update to the 2014 master plan, a portion of which was the OSLAD, the OSLAD plan that was submitted last fall and awarded funding. So the main area of focus on the update, the progress update on the design development plan progress, will be the core area, as we call it. So this is showing our initial sheet setup, an existing condition plan, existing conditions plan based off of the topographic survey that was completed. Then we're starting to prepare site preparation and removals plans, showing how we're going to prepare the site, prepare the area for the improvements that we'll be adding, so designating what's being removed and how it's being, and what, and quantities for what's being removed. And then launching into our layout and materials plan. You can see at the very bottom right corner, this is just a portion of the project. So we're just focusing on the core area again. As you start on the north side, the drop-off, designating pedestrian routes with concrete walkways, starting with the outdoor fitness station on the west side of the path. The meandering pathway continues further south, leading you to the challenge course. As you continue moving your way further south, the restroom building with a connecting overhead shelter on the southeast side of that building. And then adjacent to that, a little bit further south, is the room for the splash pad. Moving further south from where this page left off, showing the inclusive playground and the layout that was selected, the playground surface would be pour-in-place rubber, fully-inclusive, accessible surface, flush with the adjacent grade. And then at the bottom of the screen there, you're seeing a small portion of the asphalt pathway that we're using to connect the two existing paths within this region. So this is the playground selected by Burke. They're represented by Play Illinois. This is the challenge course selected, also by Burke and by Play Illinois. There's a designated start and stop, so it's intended to be an experience that you move through timed or untimed and compete. It caters to the, or the teens or the active adults as well. So it's not just specific to kids, supporting the active use theme of the park. Along with that is the outdoor fitness up by the vehicular drop-off, various exercises connected in one spot. Both for the challenge course and the fitness, the surface below that would be a synthetic grass, artificial turf, which has some impact absorption with it for, since you'll be leaving your feet for some of these exercises. This is the building design, kind of halfway through. We're working with an architect called Ramtech. This will have one men's, a men's room and a women's room, and a mechanical space in between to support the splash pad, as well as the electrical work that will need to be relocated to this building. What you're not seeing on this plan is, on the east side of this building, so the right side would be a roof overhang extension, about another 18 feet, to have some picnic tables below. This is just some more views of the building, front and side. And then splash pad, I was going to turn this over to Keith real quick.
Sorry about that. So for the splash pad, we're kind of, this, we are saying we're about 85% into the design development. The last phase of the project right now that we're dealing with is the splash pad. Currently, we're going through a process. We had started with a belief that we were going to do a drain-to-waste system, which would allow for us to have different possibilities. The water would be drained into the sewer system and all that. After discussions with Director Kaplan and with others, we've decided that's not the direction to go, due to the fact that the amount of water that we would be wasting and going against some of the EPA permitting that the Village has. So what we've decided to do is go in a different direction. And now I'm going to turn it back to Doug to explain that different direction.
Thank you. So the alternative to drain-to-waste is a recirculating splash pad. And with that comes a amount of, a certain level of requirements, mostly dictated by Illinois Department of Public Health and the permitting process and the inspections that go along with it. With the drain-to-waste, you wouldn't be required to go through IDPH, but since it's been decided to go with recirculating, some of the items, just to be aware of, with it being this system, there would be various filtration, chlorination and treatments on a weekly and a daily basis, so there's a good level of maintenance and upkeep that goes along with it. There would be a need for a reservoir or a vault to house the water after it's been treated and before it's to be pumped back out and used in the splash pad. There is a need for indoor showers. That would need to be one per restroom. With a splash pad of this size, only needs one per restroom. Larger splash pads dictated by, it's, the need for the restrooms is dictated by the bather load, which is driven by the size of the splash pad. So larger splash pads require more showers within their restrooms. Splash pad of this size would only require one shower per restroom, so two total. Also, a requirement is that the splash pad area, the deck, would, needs to be enclosed with a self-closing gate. Various emergency equipment go along with it, and I already spoke to the operation and maintenance aspect of the recirculating splash pad. So next steps from here, like Keith said, we're about 90% of the way through the design development process. From here, we go into construction documentation. We anticipate that'll take us through the end of the month, or the end of this month, looking to make our initial permit submittals early part of next month, September. And we target that being a two-month process in total. The permits that we'll need to submit will be, obviously, to the Village, recite development permits, DuPage County Stormwater for the area that we'll be working near the existing stormwater basin, Illinois Department of Public Health, as I mentioned, and then Illinois Environmental Protection Agency. And then we're looking to put this out to bid in the later part of September, getting bids back in early part of October, and looking to make a recommendation to the Village and for a potential contract award later part of that month, targeting to have construction start in the month of November, and as the weather allows, to potentially have construction here and there, based off of, you know, good, bad weather days, be completed through the winter season, ultimately with the goal to have everything substantially complete and ready for final architect-owner inspection by the 15th of June of next year, and to have this completed by no later than July 1st of next year. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions. Yes?
The restrooms, are they going to be left open? Are they going to be left open all the time? How are you going to secure them?
So the restrooms, as they are now, are the same way. So we'll have them open during times that that facility will be open. When the facility is closed, the restrooms will be open until we close our season down. We kind of do that now currently. We keep the restrooms open for soccer and everything that's going on in the, so that is, that restroom structure is for the park and the playground and everything, not just the splash pad. So it would be open for that, but there would be just the additional shower in there.
Okay. Are you anticipating vandal-proof equipment in there?
So the thought process is, is that the equipment that we'll be putting in there, the restroom facilities that we're putting in there, will be set up and designed for a park structure, kind of like the ones that are now. It's kind of going to be basically set up with the same rules and regulations that we have currently, and that stuff, it does get vandalized, not frequently, but when it is, it's something that we're able to take care of.
Mike, I guess we'll go in this. Go ahead, Pat, you've been waiting. Keith, I don't know if we talked about it, but the splash pad. Is there some kind of warranty with the, all the equipment underneath?
I think that it'll depend on what we choose. We haven't gotten through that part of the process. That'll be a part of the bid process. But I am assuming that there is different things on the different pieces. There are a number of parts of the system. There's a vault, there's a recirculation system, and then there's any amenities that we choose to put in. So everything would be looked at as we go through that part of the process.
Okay, thank you.
I'll go, nobody's talking.
Sure.
You're not going to have grass. What's going to be on the ground? Is it rubberized material or what?
So underneath the playground structure, it's going to be the rubberized. And underneath the challenge course and underneath the fitness area will be an AstroTurf.
It'll be what?
An AstroTurf.
Okay. Now, is there going to be good drainage for all that equipment? You're going to have that?
All that is included in the bid documents that'll be put together.
All the metal, what is that going to be covered with? Is that going to be rubberized or what? It's not going to rust, will it? Got you stumped.
The, which metal are you speaking of? The playground and the challenge? Yeah, that's all powder coated to resist, to resist rusting or breakdown, yes.
Oh, okay. That's all I have right now.
Did I? Mike? My turn. Ah, cool. My biggest concern was to make sure, I know the residents had input into this. I really just want to make sure they have enough input, that they've had their chances, and a complete understanding that, you know, a lot of this took place with their guidance.
So part of the unfortunate part of the COVID-19 is that to have that public input wasn't something that was as easy as we hoped it would be. What we did is, we took a lot of the commentary that came from the original meetings that were there, and part of the reason why we're doing this presentation now is that we want people to see it in advance and have an idea of what's going on, and to know that here's where we're at. We're not done yet. As I said, we're still looking at the splash pad. We've put some preliminary things in place that fit some of the different things that people were looking for with the number of swings and the type of structures we have set up, also the accessibility things that we put into this plan. So we think that although we don't have as much participation as we would have liked to have had, there is still an opportunity for people to take a look and see where we're at and to see if they have any commentary that they'd like to put in.
That's real important for me, too. And one other question is, how's this going to affect other events? Our Oktoberfest, Car Show, other events, will it be changing any of the layout for that?
So the preliminary information that we've put together doesn't have any effect, negative effect on the setups for the things that we already do. So Fest, Car Show, Oktoberfest, the areas that we're dealing with are not in the areas that affect that.
Okay. That was all I had.
Keith, I have one more. Your disc golf, you bring your own equipment, or are you going to rent it, or how does that work?
So we haven't determined whether we're going to rent equipment or if we're going to have some items for sale, or if we're not going to, we're just going to have that course out there. But the course will be set up. It'll be a free course where people can just go out and play. As you know, having sat through a number of the meetings, we've talked about disc golf. This was one of the items that a resident came forward and brought forward as something they wanted. It's been something that's been in the planning for about three years, and we will finally get this as a part of the final product here.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else have questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We're now into public discussion of agenda items. If there's anyone in the public that wishes to address this board on an agenda item, please step forward. Being none, next we will have the consent agenda before us, but items numbers 17 and 18 need to be removed. So now you have the corrected consent agenda. A motion would be in order. Trustee Sullivan?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
I think Bill seconded, Chester.
I didn't even hear him.
I know. I think you guys are going to have to take your masks off when you, you're kind of muffled.
Okay, there's been a first and a second.
We have that.
Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Poczek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Consent agenda is approved. There is no old business. So new business number one is a motion to waive first reading on new business items two through four. Trustee Schmidt?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? First reading is waived on new business items two through four. Number two is an ordinance to waive bid and accept the proposal of Schroder &amp; Schroder, Inc. for the 2020 sidewalk removal and replacement program, and authorize the execution of a contract by and between Schroder &amp; Schroder, Inc. and the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. First reading has been waived, so this would be ordinance number 2020-46. Trustee Schmidt?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Poczek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes. Yes.
Ordinance 2020-46 is approved. Number three is an ordinance to waive bid and authorize the execution of a contract with Cinagro? Help?
Cinagro.
Cinagro?
Cinagro.
Sounds good. Central LLC for sludge hauling and disposal services. First reading has been waived, so this would be ordinance number 2020-47. Trustee Sullivan?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Poczek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Ordinance 2020-47 is approved. Number four, an ordinance extending temporary executive powers pursuant to 65 ILCS 5/1, First reading has been waived, so this would be ordinance number 2020-48. Trustee Poczek?
So moved, Mayor.
We got a second?
Yes.
Discussion, anyone? Trustee Schmidt?
If I understand this correctly, I believe item number eight prohibits door-to-door solicitation on, during the period of this extension. Will that regard political solicitations also, such as those necessary to accomplish petition signings?
The executive order, Trustee Schmidt, that you're talking about, will be revised as soon as the executive powers are renewed here for the mayor.
Okay. Thank you.
Does that answer everybody's questions?
Yeah.
Sure.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato? Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Ordinance 2020 dash forty-eight is approved. Now we have a presentation of water pollution control facility phosphorus removal upgrades. Take it away.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Board.
You're welcome.
Good evening, everybody. For those of you who I haven't met yet, my name is Chris Marshinki. I am a project manager with Trotter &amp; Associates. Also have with me tonight Scott Trotter, Principal Engineer. And we're gonna take just a few minutes to discuss the phosphorus removal upgrades project at the village's wastewater treatment facility. Before we get into the project itself, I wanna spend just a minute talking about phosphorus, what it is and why we actually care, and, uh, just as importantly, why the EPA cares about it. So phosphorus is a naturally occurring element, primarily found in fertilizers, industrial cleaners, things of that nature. The issue that it causes, when it goes down drains and goes to the wastewater plant and out to our receiving waterways, is that generally it is a limiting nutrient for algae growth. So more of it goes down, more algae grows. That becomes an issue when we generate algal blooms, vast, vast fields of algae, basically, on lakes, oceans, rivers, things like that. When that algae dies and decomposes, it consumes most of the oxygen in that area and it creates hypoxic zones, or what we call dead zones. So the graphic you see on the bottom of the slide there is the dead zone uh, in the Gulf of Mexico at the Mississippi River Delta. That's something about like ten thousand square miles in size. And when that oxygen is gone, it doesn't support aquatic life, basically. So fishing, fishing industry is decimated in these areas. But it's an issue, uh, it's a local issue, it's a regional issue, and it's a, uh, it's a nationwide issue, which is why the Illinois EPA and the US EPA effectively care about it. So, when we say they're, they're gonna regulate phosphorus, what that really means for us is that they put affluent limits into our NPDS permits. So the village has an NPDS permit that was issued in 2015 that governs what the wastewater treatment facility can discharge. One of those special conditions, special condition eighteen, is the one that deals with phosphorus limits. And there are four major components of that requirement. The first one is that the village participates in the DuPage River Salt Creek Work Group, which you have for years, uh, that's an easy one. The second one is to develop a phosphorus discharge optimization plan that basically looks at the collection system, all of our commercial industrial users, and looks to see if there's anywhere we can eliminate phosphorus before it gets to the wastewater plant, before we have to actually treat it. That study was completed in 2016. The third one was development of a phosphorus removal feasibility study. Effectively, that took a step back and said, we probably won't be able to eliminate all of the phosphorus that's coming into the plant. How will we remove it once it does get to the plant? That was completed in 2017, reviewed a number of alternatives, both biological methods, chemical methods for removing that phosphorus. Ultimately, that recommended a two-phase approach to meet compliance. Subsequently, in 2018, uh, the village and Trotter &amp; Associates completed a facility plan that looked at the wastewater plant as a whole, reevaluated that approach, and came to the same conclusion. Uh, this is an approach that we'll talk about in just a minute here. The fourth and final criteria that's in the current NPDS permit is meeting that affluent limit. Uh, currently, it's a 1.0 milligram per liter phosphorus that the village should be allowed to discharge. As a point of reference, you're somewhere around four parts right now, four milligrams per liter. So we need to take it down to about twenty-five percent, that level. That limit is effective in either 2025 or 2026, depending on the method of treatment. They give you a little bit more time if you're doing biological methods. So that two-phase approach that I talked about, that was the subject of, uh, three studies now. Phase one was a digester rehabilitation. Why that's critical is, once the phosphorus is removed, it, it's removed as a sludge and it goes to the digestion process. If we didn't rehabilitate that process, we would overload it and we'd have other affluent limits that we're concerned about. So phase one included refurbishing an existing online digester and bringing a second offline digester that hasn't been in use for about twenty years into service to support that system. Phase two is really the one that we're talking about tonight. That is the phosphorus removal upgrades project, primarily composed of construction of what we call an A2O biological process. It's just a specific biological process that removes nutrients, and that one specifically happens to remove it in a very consistent and a very effective manner with a high degree of operational control. Several other components that we'll go into, there's an internal recycle pump station, some chemical polishing, and site work, site piping, things of that nature. So the schedule for those two projects, the digester rehabilitation has been designed, it is permitted, and will likely go out for bids in the next several weeks here, with anticipation being that construction would be completed in the spring of 2022. So we're talking long-duration projects here. Phase two, the phosphorus removal upgrades, is targeting a bid date in July of 2022. So we'd be doing design from now up until that point, design and permitting. That July of 2022 immediately follows the digester rehabilitation, so it's, it's two parts of the same goal. Construction on that project would be completed in late 2024, which would allow the village to have 2025 to optimize that process and meet compliance. Since it is a biological process that's being proposed, it takes a fair amount of time to physically grow those microorganisms and that biomass to remove the phosphorus. So looking at the costs associated with this phosphorus project, both operational and capital, in a moment. The operational costs associated with it are primarily with, with that additional sludge that's generated to remove the phosphorus, somewhere around four to five hundred pounds a day. That means we have additional labor in processing that sludge. There is pumping, which is energy consumption costs, and polymer that goes into processing that sludge, that's estimated about $64,000 per year. There is a small degree of chemical polishing anticipated with this, but we're talking something about ten gallons per day of that chemical, so a very minor amount. That's the benefit to biological phosphorus removal, is it doesn't need that ongoing chemical cost. And finally, uh, staffing of the plants and labor. We went through, when we did the facility plan, the US EPA's staffing guidelines for wastewater treatment facilities, and went through the process of estimating the hours required to run a biological phosphorus removal project or a system. And it's, it's roughly .4 FTE is what it would take to run that upgraded process. So that's another consideration. Capital costs? The estimated construction costs of the upgrades themselves are about 4.3 million, together with design and construction engineering, legal, administrative costs, we're right around $5 million project altogether. It is anticipated that that would be funded through the Illinois EPA's low-interest loan program. The details of that, it is a twenty-year repayment period. We typically estimate a two percent interest rate on that, that's been the historical rate, but it is tied to the bond market. So right now, uh, the rate is currently 1.35 percent. That would be the rate that the digester project that's nearing bidding would be receiving, so a very good interest rate. Annual repayments would likely begin in 2024, when the project is substantially complete, and cost roughly $316,000 per year. The final slide here was prepared by Mr. Polling on the financial analysis side and shows the current debt service revenues, as well as the obligations associated with them for each year from fiscal year 2021 through 2024. As you can see, uh, the current debt service revenues are anticipated to meet all of those obligations, with the exception of fiscal years 2025 and 2026. And these include all of the current bonds, as well as the two low-interest loans that are anticipated, one for the digester rehabilitation and one for the phosphorus removal. So all of that is included in this analysis. And that is all I had for you this evening. If anybody has any questions?
Mike?
I'm gonna go first, all right. Um, first of all, what creates phosphorus that's getting to the plant? Where does it come from? What is our, do we have a main source of this?
So, a couple of different things, and the most difficult one is that it, it's found in water, in regular water that you get out of the faucet that goes down the drain. So right off the bat, if nothing was added to the system, you would still have to remove that. Other main contributors are largely industrial cleaners, although those over the last five or ten years have been regulated very heavily. So we used to see a lot in places like car washes or industrial cleaning facilities, things like that. But that's kind of coming down a little bit. By and large, it's just, uh, it's just in waste, and it's naturally occurring in the water itself as well.
So there's nothing we can really do to help?
There really isn't. That was, that was the subject of that optimization plan that was looked at in 2016, was identifying any main, major contributors of phosphorus in the village's collection system. Uh, so it actually included a fair amount of sampling of industries that we said may contribute phosphorus. And through all of that analysis, found that there was really nobody contributing an appreciable amount, anything over one percent, within the collection system that could be cost-effectively reduced.
Hmm, I was just curious where it's coming from, that's all.
Trustee Schmidt?
The upgrades to the, the upgrades to the processing plant, can that be done within the footprint of the existing facility, or do you have to?
Bill, can you talk louder?
Do the upgrades to the processing plant be done within the footprint of the existing facility, or will we have to add on to that?
That's, that's an excellent question, because the village is actually kind of uniquely situated, um, compared to a lot of municipalities. So all of this work is done in what we call the eration basins. They are tanks that are full of the wastewater, and that's where all of the work takes place to remove these pollutants. The village's tankage is large enough to support these upgrades without building anything additional. So the upgrades are splitting those existing tanks into separate basins that will do different types of work. Um, but the good news is, there is no additional concrete tankage, which is really what drives up the costs. Instead of it being maybe a $5 million project, if you had to build additional basins, you may be looking at a $10 million project. So no, everything fits within the existing footprint.
Do our employees do all this work? Do you supply any additional help?
So, other than the design, and typically during startup of the process, we'll provide engineering expertise and some training on that process, 'cause it is, it, it does require a fair amount of operational control. Uh, but there is, there are training programs, but ultimately, it will be run by the village's staff.
Rachel, will we have to hire any additional help?
Yeah, so the question was, would we need to hire anybody to support that? Um, so when we went through the staffing analysis, just from a, from a labor hours available standpoint, uh, according to the US EPA's guidelines, that process would require another .4 full-time equivalence of a staffer. The remainder of the facility's evaluation found that the village was appropriately staffing the wastewater plant, or slightly understaffing, uh, but obviously is, is operating well currently. When that comes online, I think you'd probably have to look at your staffing levels at that point and see if it merits another one, but that's a village consideration.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We now go to number six of new business. That is a resolution to approve and authorize the execution of the First Amendment to the master agreement by and between Trotter &amp; Associates Incorporated and the Village of Glendale Heights for wastewater engineering and skater services. This would be Resolution 2020 dash R dash fifty-eight. Trustee Sullivan?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Resolution 2020 dash R dash fifty-eight is approved. Number seven, a resolution to authorize the execution of an agreement for professional engineering services for the water pollution control facility phosphorus removal upgrades project for the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. This would be Resolution 2020 dash R dash fifty-nine. Trustee Pojek?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Resolution 2020 dash R dash fifty-nine is approved. Number eight, a resolution to authorize the execution of an agreement for professional engineering services for the water pollution control facility digester rehabilitation project for the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. This would be Resolution 2020 dash R dash sixty. Trustee Schmidt?
So moved, second.
Discussion.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Ordinance number, no, resolution, number 2020 dash R dash sixty is approved. We are now be to public discussion of agenda items. If there's anyone in the public that wishes to address this board on an agenda item, please step forward. Being none. A motion to recess the committee as a whole. No, to recess the board meeting.
The committee.
And do the committee the whole, so we can.
Go to executive session.
Turn to executive session.
Go back to executive session afterwards.
Okay.
The recess is in order.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Board meeting is recessed, and we go into committee the whole, and I believe that's trustee Schmidt.
Okay. The Thursday, August sixth, 2020 Committee the Whole meeting is called to order. Kirk, please note who is present.
Noted.
Thank you. Uh, is there any public comment? Oh, I'm sorry, any additions to the, uh, trustee Light?
We're gonna talk about Fullerton Avenue and the new squads.
What was the second one, please?
The new, the new squads.
New squads.
Anybody else?
Can you pull that man down and say what you really said?
What was it?
New squads.
Was it, I, I didn't give. The Fullerton Avenue and the new squads, the squad cars that we have coming.
Mike, would you take off your mask while you speak, so we can hear?
I know, it's hard to hear.
Very hard to hear.
Okay, um, wait a minute, is there any public comments about, uh, anything to be discussed by the committee the whole? Okay, being none. Committee recommendations. Number one, Plan Commission. A recommendation to deny the application for amendment to a previously approved conditional use, ordinance eighty-three dash twenty-nine in the C3 General Commercial District, to allow storage of vehicles waiting to be serviced to be parked in the front yard parking lot, and to allow the outdoor storage of U-Haul rental trucks, trailers, and cargo vans in the rear yard of the subject property, located at 387 East North Avenue at Ed and Son's Auto Body. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, you can come up.
Yes.
Okay.
He can come up.
Will the applicant like to make a presentation? Okay. And please state your name and address, please.
My, my, my name is Mike Schroder. My address is 200 Fulton Street, West Chicago, Illinois. My name is Mike Schroder. I'm the owner of Ed and Sons Auto Body for 36 years now. I am grateful to have a chance to keep my U-Haul business operating. The community development department feels as though the parking in my facility is insufficient to accommodate my U-Haul business. I disagree with this notion. I can sufficiently store all of my equipment in the back of my building. I brought some, I brought some photos here today of what it looked like this morning. It doesn't always look like that, but at least you guys could get some sort of an idea. I left messages with all of the trustees regarding this, if, if they could come over and look, because I know you guys don't vote on it tonight. It's a two-week process. But you could come over and see how my facility is run. I don't know if any of you on the board have ever been concerned or looked at my parking availability before this issue arose. This is because I have never done anything in 36 years I've been in business to disrupt the community. I am just a small business owner trying to make it through COVID-19 pandemic. As a result of the pandemic, my business is down 40% this year. The U-Haul rentals are generating income needed to keep my business afloat when the auto body business is struggling at this time. During the day, I use the side of my building as a staging to U-Hauls so that, that will be going out that day in order, in the order that they will be leaving. I have been renting U-Hauls for the past three years without issue. I have always had enough parking for customers, U-Hauls and all the vehicles being repaired at my facility. All of my surrounding neighbors are supportive of me and my business. They were all sent certified letters regarding the U-Hauls and know what had concerns or issues on it. I have always been diligent in keeping my property neat and clean, both inside and the surrounding, the entire outside of my building. I have stopped accepting 20 and 26-foot trucks on my premises to reduce parking impact. On the occasion, I have a one-way truck. It leaves with an ode or two. These are extremely hard times for all small and large businesses struggling and closing. I cannot understand why mine could possibly shut down without going, without a good cause. After 36 years in business, I have the potential of falling victim to administrative bureaucracy. This would only affect myself, my wife, my clients, the city of Glendale Heights would also suffer as a result. I am willing to work with you to make it right. As trustees, you are here to do the best for your constituents, your community and your business owners. I am asking you all, please see my position as a small business owner, how important it is to me to keep my U-Haul rentals, to keep my business to survive with these extreme trying times. I thank you for the opportunity to state my case and appreciate your time this evening. Please do the right thing for the city, state and the country. Thank you.
Pass the pictures to us.
Okay, is there anybody else that wishes to make a statement or a comment? Any discussion?
Bill?
Bill?
Chester?
Mike, I have issues with you. You've had this business for over 33 years, correct?
Yes, sir.
You can't blame this business slowdown for this COVID-19. You, you've been in business for 30, uh, three years.
Third, no, 36 years, sir.
U-Haul.
U-Haul for three years, yes, sir.
Right, that's what I'm referring to. You've had so many times to get a permit. You've been notified and.
No, I have never been notified, sir.
To get a permit.
I've never been notified, sir.
You've got.
I've never gotten any citations. I've never been notified. I got notified in December of 2019. I contacted the, I contacted the community development department in 2018 in about July or August when I found a lost dog and a community police officer told me you needed a permit for this. Other, and I contacted Mike Crowell and it took him a year and a half to get back to me. This is not, I didn't do anything. The community development department was dragging their feet.
How come you never pushed the issue for a permit?
Because I have work to do. I'm busy working and that was not something on my mind.
A permit allows you to have the U-Haul equipment, right?
I, I had the U-Haul equipment. He was going to get back to me. So that's, he didn't get back to me and I was busy doing my thing. I'm a small business owner.
You should never be that busy not to get a permit for any business.
I didn't know I needed one for the first year.
But they've been asking you to get.
Nobody asked me to get one. Who asked me to get one? And let's see the, because every time that I get an email from Mike Crowell, he says reply back to me. So show me the emails and then I will agree with you.
I haven't, I don't have that.
No, 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 I know, I know. You know what I'm saying, no?
If I may, I, I do respectfully disagree. I, we did put, provide you a notice and we had conversations and our.
When, when did I get this notice?
I can check, but my recollection of the situation was that we discussed it and that you indicated that you were going to apply and then we set it on, we put it and then we did not, after you indicated that you were going to apply, we did not pursue it for a period of time and then we raised it again to you back more recently.
And in December, when you raised it to me, what did I do? I applied for the permit.
The second time, we gave you notice, so.
I, I don't recall the first time.
Okay.
And if you show me an email, then I can, I can agree with you.
Okay, I do.
Because all of Mike Crowell's emails that come to me say please reply, correct or not?
I'm, I'm sorry?
All of Mike Crowell's, when he sends me an email, he says please reply to this.
Correct.
Okay. So if you have them, I'll take.
Okay, but I do disagree with your representation.
Trustee Meritato?
Then did you apply for a permit?
In December, when he, when he sent me to everything. Before that, I never received anything.
I, that's besides the point. Half of us are fault for night. Catching them for three years, for number one, or whatever it is, two years. So where are you going to put these trucks? In the back of the lot, in the front?
They're, they're in, I, I put all, now, now that I'm, I'm really organized now. All my trucks fit in the back of my lot, okay? So it's, it's a gated lot, so it's enclosed, it's, it's sealed. It's done. And as I need the trucks, I bring them out. I have trailers back there and I have trucks and I have some photos of them. I don't have all my trucks in these photos, but I.
I was there the other night, so I mean, I.
And, and was it a wreck?
I see you, I, you, no, you had nothing in the back when I was there. You had no cars, I mean.
Well, wait, it depends though, Pat, because, I mean, the, the trucks go in and out. So it's like I might have no trucks, like Fridays, Saturdays and Sundays, I have no trucks.
Yeah, there was, there was nothing there when I was there.
Okay.
You gonna, you gonna put them in the, in the back of the lot?
They're all in the back of the lot, sir.
How many, how many are you putting back there?
Five, five trucks and then I have some trailers.
How big are the trucks? Not the.
No, 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 my trucks, I got, I got two vans. I got a 10-footer, 15 and a 17. And they all fit where the, where my building, where the end of my building is, the back of it, they're all back there. And I have three trailers on the side. The only trailer I do not put in my backyard, I have a 6 by 12 enclosed trailer and it's got a dual axle and it's hard to, you cannot maneuver it. You know what I mean? You can't twist it. So I leave that in the front parking slot. Other than that, everything can go in the backyard.
Okay, then I rest something about, about the fire department, the trucks can't. I mean, why would a truck, why would a fire trucks want to go in back of the building?
What if there's a fire back there?
There.
How's the fire truck, you gonna get back there now?
I can clarify.
There's nothing there. They can get back there. I was there and I, I can't see how a fire truck gets back there now.
I can clarify that, Mr. Trustee Meritato. In the initial review, the fire district expressed concern about obstructed access. At the Plan Commission meeting, there was confusion that they thought that that, that we were under the impression that they, fire district wanted fire truck access behind. A subsequent letter has been sent to Mr. Schroder and to the village, which is in your packet, that the, their concern with obstructed access is for personnel, ladders and equipment. So they do not need the truck to go back there. They need the, the personnel, the ladders to go on the, the property. So there was clarification from the Plan Commission meeting.
May I?
So if there's a fire in the building, God forbid, they're going to try to die the fire off from the, from the street, right? What do they get, what do they guy go in the back for? I mean, I'm not a fireman, I don't know, but I don't see any fire guy out here telling me any different.
Right, so just the letter that they provided in the packet, I, I can't answer that question.
May I, can I interject a thought? I had the fire department at my facility about two weeks ago. They were on foot checking out all the buildings in Glendale Heights. And I asked them, I said, if my building caught on fire and I have a sprinkler system in it, I said, how would you die the fire out? He goes, I would go to your key box, take the key out and shut the sprinkler off. He goes, there would be no reason for me to even hook a hose up. He goes, because your sprinkler system would die it out. It's a brick building, there's nothing there, you know? So they, they have no reason to even go on the roof to go anywhere. And I told him, break the front window. You could see the front window of my building. You can see the hole inside of my building. Get the jaws of life, cut the overhead door. It's a 16-foot door. I mean, do, you know, they like to cut doors apart and stuff. They like the jaws of life.
Okay, thank you.
If a truck caught on fire in the back, would they be able to get a hose back there?
Yeah, down the, down the side of the building, yes.
Yeah, I mean, they, they can get a hose in the back. I can't see how a, a, a fire truck's not getting back in the building when the front of the building's on fire.
No, I think they just want to be able to get personnel back there with a hose and as long as they can.
What?
I, I've been there for 36 years and have not had an incident, thank heavens. You know what I mean? And I got, I got another 20 to go or so, or 30.
Trustee Pocak?
Mike, last Saturday night around 7:30 to 8 o'clock, I went down North Avenue on the, on the east side of your building. There were trucks parked on that side.
There was not. There was not because.
Let me finish. There were trucks parked on the east side of the building and there was a trailer in the front of the store. That's a Saturday night between 7:30 and 8 o'clock. I should have taken a picture, but I was going somewhere.
You should have because on Saturday night, I went to my facility at 6 o'clock. I got rid of all of my trucks because my friend dropped his 1950 delivery wagon off at my, my shop. 6 o'clock, I got video cameras if you want to come and see them.
This is where we disagree.
Right, and I, and I'm sorry, Chester, I'm sorry. I don't mean to disagree with you. I, but I went there because I looked at my video cameras.
You scared me. Are you all right?
Yeah, I'm good.
Let me see those pictures when you get there. I'm done right now.
Trustee Light?
Mike, I believe it was Sunday night, July 26th, I went down about 10:00 PM. The lot in front was completely filled with trucks. Down the side was filled. Yeah, one, oh, sorry. You had one residence, resident or a customer's car in the lot with, I was surprised at how many trucks or U-Hauls were there, trailers and everything else. Matter of fact, they were starting to spill over into the Hookah Lounge lot. There's like that subdivided spot. I mean, it was a Sunday night. There's a lot of cars and a lot of, a lot of vehicles parked in there. And I know I believe conditional use said something about originally, from what they said, what I've learned was there was no parking at all in the front of the building.
There's, there's eight slots in the front of my building.
Was that business hours? I don't know.
That's any hours. That's my, it's any hours.
And I know there was immense amount of vehicles and trailers parked there. I thought it was kind of, if anything, I thought you would have been watching all of it at any point in time, that it would stay clear of all of it because we've been watching for a long time. I go by all the time. And I did notice that there were a lot of them there and as far as the fire department goes, I believe wholeheartedly in our fire department. I have a stake in my fire department. And I believe and trust what they do say. If it is a hazard, it's not just your building that is a concern. You have residents that are around there, forests that are around there, other businesses around there and other potential spots that could start a hotspot. And it's necessary for them to gain access all the way around. Yeah, they could break a window out, trust me. I know that for a fact. I've given them a couple of cars and watched them cut them up. But it's just a, a safety concern that they had. I get it. You know, the business, if it does, like you said before, it, you have insurance. I mean, is it enough insurance to cover every single car, buildings, everyone, or even a life if so be? I don't think so. Nobody wants that. It was a concern and I was concerned with that many cars parked there that night on a Sunday.
That, that night, I can't speak of for sure, sir.
Yeah.
Because, but I know last Saturday, I was, I swear to you, I was there at 6 o'clock, moving my things around because of this.
Yeah.
And when I, when I do see it clogged up, I have cameras all around the building so I can see what's going on. And you have to, you have to also take into consideration, the hookah bar has an overflow of cars. So they use my parking lot as well. I'm, they're not U-Haul trucks.
Yeah.
U-Hauls are mine, but I mean, the, the hookah bars using my lot in the evening, you know? And has anybody really looked at my lot in the last three years?
But you're okay with on the hookah bars?
With the hookah bar, they're my neighbors, so I, I have to keep peace with everybody. And lately, I've not been using the hookah bar's property at all, you know what I mean? Because of the fact I want to prove to you that I only need my own lot.
Right. I know it was, it was just, it was a lot of traffic there and it was just one car that was a customer car, I would have assumed. It could have been a Hookah Lounge person parked there, but the rest of it was just, it was trailers down the side, bigger, bigger U-Hauls down the side also. It was quite a bit. I know the last time we've had something like this come up, it was a, for another facility and it was, who was here was present, was unanimous vote to vote no against it.
Because she didn't have enough room. I know where it was.
And it was, it's, there are still ongoing issues at other places that, you know, one other.
Yeah, right, Rick. Yeah, at Maytag.
I mean, it just, to me, once the fire department said no, I was, I gotta believe in what they say.
And, and I believed in what he said too. And then when I talked to Chief Russ, Russ Howe, or Russ Woods, I'm sorry. And then when, when the firemen came to my facility and they, they said, we don't have, we'll never go in your building. We're going to shut, we're going to shut the sprinkler system off. That's why we paid for a sprinkler system when we built it in 1984.
Right.
You know? Because I don't want anybody hurt either and that's why I always, I said at the last meeting, let the building burn. I got insurance. Who, you know what I mean? I don't want anybody to get hurt.
Yeah.
That's the last thing on my mind.
Oh, I get that. Only question I had or statement.
Trustee Meritato?
When you're down, when you're down as much as I am in your business, okay, for the year and, and you got something helping you a little bit, you're, you're, you're pushing forward because you, you want to, you got to succeed.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? We're, we're, we all have to take care of our families.
Yep. I know your business very, very well.
Trustee Meritato?
You know, we all talked about how many, how many cars are in the lot. I mean, what if he had 15 cars stuck in the lot for repairs? I mean, it's basically, it's the same thing. You drive by his place, you see 15 cars all over his lot because they're in for repairs. So why can't the guy have at least three trucks in the back of his, in the back of his lot? And everybody's happy?
Yeah.
The guy's in business. I mean, he's on North Avenue. It's a, it's a great commercial run, North Avenue. I mean, I, you know, I, I don't see anything wrong with it.
Me either.
Trustee Schroder?
I would like to talk.
Yes, yes.
Go ahead.
I want to make an apology to you. I just text my wife. That was Sunday night, not Saturday night.
Okay.
We've seen all that stuff.
Okay.
Same night as Mike saw it.
No, he was on the 26th.
26th.
This was Sunday night.
Trustee Schroder? Mary?
Yeah, oh, who called on me?
I did.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought Mike had the floor. Okay.
My mask is on.
All right, first of all, I just want to say this. Not only, not because Michael is my son, but he has abided by everything that the village, and I've worked there for many years and everything the village has asked us to do, we do. When he said that his business was down because of the coronavirus and someone said, no, that had nothing to do with it, that is not true. There isn't a business that hasn't gone down because of the coronavirus because people are not going out there. They're staying home. Their cars were not that important to them. So if this man is trying to make a living. So if this man is trying to make a living, regardless of the fact that he's my son or not, any small business that came before me, I would support them, because this is what our village is for, for the people, not for anything else. And as they've already said, as Pat said, if the, if the place were on fire, they would, they, the fire trucks would come from the front, not from the back. He's, he's all blocked in in the back. How would the fire trucks get in the back, even if there were no trucks back there? They could not get back there, because there's no need to get to the back of the, of the building. You would go through the front of the building. He does have a, a system where if there was a fire, the water would come down automatically. As I said, he's abided by everything that we have, and I really think that we should give him a chance. This is not the time to hurt someone's business. This is the time to help people. Regardless of whether he's my son or not, they had nothing to do with it. We're here to help the community. All right? And if he's got a couple of trucks there and he's making a living for himself, he's doing what is right. That's all I want to say.
Thanks.
I agree with her.
Anybody else have anything to say? Mayor.
I don't want to say anything, because I've worked with Mary Sharon for many years. But we have an ordinance, we have it for a reason. We have zoning for reasons. I've been through the lot over there, probably started going through about two years ago, because we have issues with another place in town, which I'm sure you know.
Next door, yeah.
And they brought up your establishment, saying, why can he do it and I can't? I've been through the lot many times, Michael. It has been packed with trucks and trailers. COVID hit us the end of 2019. You've been doing this three years. And that's what you said.
Right.
That was long before COVID. So I don't want to hear that you're suffering because of...
No, my auto body business is suffering because of COVID, because people...
But Michael, then why did you start it three years ago?
I started it to make extra money.
What?
The U-Haul business, I started to make extra money.
Okay.
I did that to make extra money. And now, okay, Linda, you're absolutely correct, yes. No, I've been a pig with my U-Hauls in the last, since I had to go before the last board, I started looking at all my stuff and saying, I better look really good. And now, as soon as I get in it in the morning, all my stuff is reorganized and moved.
But Michael, for three years, it wasn't.
No, but he was bugging me about it.
It looked like crap. I'm, I'm sorry. It did. You drive down North Avenue...
Why didn't you come and say something to me then?
And you had U-Hauls and trailers and everything, not only all over your, your lot, but also some on the grass and some in the Hookah lot.
Never on the grass, never on the grass.
I don't want to argue...
Right.
...with my fellow trustees or anything else, but...
No, you...
We're also supposed to be doing what's best for our community. And when you drive down the main road in our town and see...
But he's aware of it now.
Something that looks like crap.
And as soon as he comes in in the morning, he moves his trucks.
And nothing...
He can't help it at night.
I go there...
When people drop off the trucks.
You know me. If I'm out, it's during the day. So when I saw all this...
It was during the day.
It was all during the day. So the trucks weren't gone.
I mean, I see it on Sunday nights sometimes.
This is a very difficult situation, but I truly believe we, we told another place no.
Well, I didn't agree with you on that either.
What?
I didn't agree with that either.
You voted no. You know, what can I...
I can't tell you why, but...
All I can say is, you know, we've worked really hard to clean up North Avenue. We worked really hard to get rid of the strip club and all this stuff down at that end.
Well, you can't look at that. It's a strip club.
What?
It's not a strip club.
Sharon, I know, but there was a PUD on that property that said there'd be no parking in the front.
Well, that's impossible.
That's what it, that's what...
Because if somebody gets in an accident, has their car towed there? Has their car towed there, it's going to be in the front of the lot, until he gets in in the morning.
Yes.
Okay, so...
But it's not to stay there.
Well, no, of course not.
And my U-Hauls don't stay there at all.
Were in the front lot parked, you know? The last thing I want to do is hurt a business. But the next last thing I want to do is say, well, it's okay for you, but it's not okay for you. Because that's not fair. And we're working so hard to clean up Glen Air, as much of a mess as it was, we've worked so hard that we don't need other businesses on North Avenue just jamming stuff in. We've, we've got the issue with the landscape company on North Avenue. It is horrendous. Absolutely horrendous. But he's not in Glendale Heights, he's in county. But it looks like Glendale Heights, and it's all full of crap. You work so hard to make your community better.
Could only make it better by helping the businesses and people that live there.
If this were only done because of COVID and everything went down, but that's not the case. That's not the case.
No, but it is, it should have nothing to do with it.
Everybody wants extra money, Sharon, but not at the expense...
Of what?
Of how our community looks. We've covered ditches, we redo streets, we do all that. I remember when a car dealer went in down on North Avenue, and we gave him such a hard time, you got to have all this nice grass area, all this stuff, I'm sure you remember, Don, and because we wanted it to be an asset. They did that, but now, and they still have a couple like that. You were on the board, Sharon, you know. You know. That was very...
I don't want my community to not look good either.
I know.
And now he's aware of it too.
Sharon, all I'm going to say is, anybody that goes over there, and like I said, I've been many times, what I'm going to tell you is, that is not a big lot. It's not a big drive. And when you have trucks in the back, they, I mean, it's solid. I've got pictures, I've got a lot of them. But it's solid trucks. And maybe if it's on fire and you want to say, well, just let it burn. What if you've got all these trucks there with gas in them, everything else? You don't think there'll be explosions or anything? I mean, you're talking... My husband welded and stuff on cars and different things as a hobby, not as his occupation, but I know how torches can set fires. You've got your settling tanks, you've got different things that are...
Right, but this is my life, and for 36 years, I have not had an incident. Because of the fact, two hours prior to going home, you make sure that you stop your welding, no gases lit, because of the fact, you want to be able to come to work tomorrow.
I understand you've been fortunate for all those years.
No, I haven't been...
I'm going to say one thing. An accident is an accident. It's never meant to happen. It happens through nobody's fault. I don't, and... I just feel that this is difficult for all of us at this point, but I can't say that I think that we should change the PUD to make it where it's okay to park all these U-Hauls out there, because I don't think that makes it an added benefit for the community. I'm, I'm sorry, Michael.
But Linda, you've only been looking at my lot for the last six months. I mean...
Oh, yes, I have.
For the last six months. Because, because that's when, that's when the community development started up my stuff.
They've been looking...
Then why didn't you call me? Why didn't you call me and say, hey, man, what's up? And you don't have a permit, Mike?
Michael, did you call me and say, come look at my building?
I was going to call you, I was going to call you before this meeting, Linda.
No, you didn't.
And I was even going to talk to Billy today when I seen him. I was going to say, call your mom off. Okay, but I didn't because I can't do it. Okay, I know.
I probably said more than...
I know, yes.
I just, I got to do what I feel is right in my heart, you know? I'm sorry. I, I just can't support that one. Now, if you want to do something else...
Open a strip club?
What?
Open a strip club?
Yeah. I don't think so. Okay, I'm, I'm done talking.
Thanks.
Yeah, Mike, I've seen dozens of pictures that code enforcement took in the daytime, all the trucks and trailers on the side and the front, all over the place. Now, Pat, you told me about, over a year ago, you used to drive down, I wasn't aware of this, because I hardly go down North Avenue, you were telling me about the mess at U-Haul, all the trailers and trucks over there. Then I started to go down by myself. You used to tell me how bad it looked over there.
Well, it was...
Correct?
If it was so bad...
Didn't you tell me that, Pat?
I don't know if I did or not.
You did.
Well, I don't know if I did or not. But if it was so bad, why don't you call up the community service department and then have them go over there?
Pat?
It's a very simple, simple solution.
Why didn't you do it then?
I...
Because it's none of my business. The guy's making money, I'm not going to bother him.
Oh, that's not what you told me before, Pat.
This is exactly what I told you.
Oh, Jesus.
One more time, Bill? I promise I'll be short. I also know for a fact that community development has been by you many times.
No, they haven't.
Oh, yeah.
No, they haven't.
Because every time I went through there and took pictures, I went there.
They never came and, they never stepped on my property and spoke to me, Linda.
I, I don't want to argue anymore, but I'm going to stand up for my community development department, because I know how hard they've worked. We turn in little piddly stuff lots of times to community development and expect them to run out and fix it. I don't consider this a little tiny thing. And, but, community development, don't say they didn't ever say anything, because I know better, Michael.
Linda, I swear to God, I swear to God.
Michael.
They'd never been to my facility. They've never been there, or I would have addressed this permit before December with the email that I got from Mike Krul. Why wouldn't I have? That's, that, you, I'm a man, you have to stand up for what you're doing, you know what I mean? If you, you have to have a driver's license, you got to pay your taxes, you do it. You know, if I needed a, if I knew I needed a permit and they were pushing the issue, or even came to my facility, I would have been on it.
Joanne, speak up, were you there or weren't you?
Oh...
We were there for several reasons. And in regard to the code enforcement, it was not on site, we contacted you, and...
Who contacted me?
Pardon me?
Who contacted me and when?
I will get that information. I had...
Okay.
And we did contact you, you said you would apply.
When did the contact start?
About two years ago. And then, that was the contact, and then you were going to apply, you didn't, and then it did go, then we did not pursue it diligently for every month. And then we contacted you again last fall, I believe it was before December. And I'll get that information. But I, I do not agree with you. We did reach out to you approximately two years ago.
Okay. I, when I back up my emails to find Mike Krul's email and stuff, and I hit his name up there, what comes up is in 19, nothing before that. And I have emails from 15.
Okay, I disagree with you.
Okay, okay.
Okay, one more time, Bill? The only thing I'm going to say too is that, in all fairness to our staff, sometimes things are very difficult for them to do when it's going against an elected official.
We understand that.
We...
And we don't have a problem with community development.
But they were there. Were they there every...
First of all...
Were they there every day? No.
Well, no, of course not. But when he saw...
Did part of it have to do with who's connected?
No, when he saw that he, that they wanted him to contact him, I, as a trustee and his trustee, I didn't know he needed a permit. I'm sorry.
To run a second business on...
To me, that wasn't a second business.
It is.
Well, I didn't know that.
It's vehicles, I didn't think it was a second business. I repair U-Hauls also.
And I didn't either, I swear to God. So when they contacted him, he applied for a permit.
Ed and Son's Auto Body.
And U-Haul.
Not Ed and... Not Ed and Son's U-Haul rental.
Oh, no.
They are not, an auto body business is not a rental for U-Haul trucks.
You're right, well, now we know that.
So I'm sorry.
Trustee Schmidt.
I just...
Trustee Schmidt.
I just want what's best for our town.
If I, if I may, it, it sounds like the board has some additional questions. They have some questions in regards to when contacts was first being made with community development. There's some questions in regards to the letters that the fire district has provided, perhaps if the board, it's up for, not final action today, certainly, so if the board would like to get some additional clarification, if you want to give us that direction, and we can come back with those answers for you. And have the fire department here.
Have the chief, please.
Do we want a motion to table?
You can do, sure, Mayor, you can do that. Can you make a motion to table? It'll appear on your next committee of the whole, if that's what you want to do. And get more data.
I would like to make a motion to table.
Would you like to make it, Mayor?
Pardon?
Would you like to make it? I'm chairing the, the committee here.
Are you making the motion?
That's what I thought I was doing.
Okay, second.
Is there a second?
Sharon seconded.
I second.
I don't know that she can second.
Oh, can I second it?
Why not?
Sure she can. Yeah, she can second.
All right.
If you want somebody else to, I'm sure Mike or Pat or Chester can do it too. Doesn't matter, but I don't see any problem with Sharon doing it.
Okay.
All right, that's not a problem then.
Are we specifying a date? Excuse me?
It'll autom, well, you could say, table to the, what is it, the next 14th to 20th? Is it 19th? I don't know.
20th.
It's the 20th.
20th, okay. Table to August 20th, committee of the whole.
For Don, this is a recommendation from the Plan Commission, so we're not running in any time issues in regards to the time that the board has to take action.
No, we looked at that, and the plan commission has some restrictions. We don't.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so as I understand it, the motion is to table this item until the committee of the whole meeting on Thursday, August 20th. Is that correct? Motion has been made and seconded.
No, you don't need one, Mayor. You can make a voice vote.
Okay.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, then I guess we'll do a roll call vote.
You can do that.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Sure.
Trustee Muratato?
No, I don't think so.
Yes.
No. Can Sharon vote on this? Oh, she can?
It's a motion to table.
Oh, because Pat just asked me to, and I wasn't aware of it.
Trustee Pojek?
Yeah, no.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee President Jackson?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes. Motion is tabled until next meeting. Okay, we have... Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
We have now discussion regarding the restaurant and bar grant program.
That would be me. Thank you, Trustee Schmidt. If it's okay with the board, I would just as soon go ahead and remove that. I did not get the memo to you until just minutes before the board meeting started. And in order for you to have the opportunity to review that before we get into discussion with it, if it's okay with you, I'll just remove that, and we'll talk about it on the 20th.
Sounds good to me.
Yep.
Any objections?
No.
All right, now we go to other. Oh, light, Fullerton Avenue.
Okay, I think my mask off so everyone can hear. Fullerton Avenue, we've got some construction going on with digging holes and tractors and such on there. I just wanted to find out exactly what's going on and what actions will be taken to, I guess, restore everything as it's so been put on a nice little placard on our doors. Can I get any information on that? Like, what's the... What are they burying or...
Trustee Schmidt, I'm sorry, you probably can't see me because I'm behind you, if I can respond to that. The request, the digging is being done by, it's actually the contractor is MCI Metro for Verizon. It's part of their 5G network. It's going from Carroll Stream, just slightly east of Gary Avenue, all the way down Fullerton and then to Glen Allen Road and then slightly north. So it is burying fiber optic lines for the 5G. They're going to come back and put branches off to the north and south, so we will be seeing subsequent construction as well in the public right-of-way. We, Public Works Engineering, reviewed the proposal for, to make sure that it didn't conflict with our water mains or sewer lines, so that's how we review it. They have the right to go in our right-of-way, and we can only review it for conflicts. They are required to restore it, to put the regrading and seeding down. I don't know if they're going to water. That is not part of their contract. It's not a contract with the village, but that's not in their proposal. The code just requires that it be graded and seeded.
I know it had said that it would be in, you know, as good, if not better, shape then. I've had some concern from residents because, you know, whether or not we water it, which, you know, we'll be responsible for. Some of the residents may not water it, and some of the lines are close to other properties, let's say. I mean, one of the holes they dug in my yard is almost in my neighbor's yard. You know, and neighbor disputes can cause some sort of issues with, I'm not watering that. They're their job, and now we have a dead spot in the middle of the grass. It just looks bad all the way around.
I can certainly contact the contractor to see if they plan to water it, but it is not a requirement. So we would urge residents to water that if it gets dry.
And just the other destruction, as far as like they, I saw, really strange looking on my Ring doorbell to see a tractor driving down the front yard. It was a small tractor, but a little bit of disturbance on the grass itself with flattened spots and stuff like that. So I was a little bit concerned. If it didn't grow back or it was destroyed, that other residents may have more damage than I have. I want to make sure it's taken care of.
We will monitor it. One of the conditions of approval is that they are required to contact the village after they complete the project so we can go out and take a look at it. So that is one of the, to confirm that the restoration's been complete.
Oh, good. I'll get I'll get a list because I'll walk it myself first, help out. So that's that's about all the question I had on it. I just wanted to know what was going on with it. Some residents were confused. I mean, you get some info, but not all of it. But that seems to be pretty good info there.
Hey, Mike, let me introduce...
Sure.
They did boring on Whitman Drive on the north side of Whitman, under the street, under Whitman to the house in back of me. Then they dug about 15 feet beyond my backyard, all the way down to the end by the creek. And they finished all that. Then they went across the street on Pace and dug over there underground all the way to Thorn... Thorncliff. When they got through, they, another group came in, leveled everything off, put that fake grass with the straw in there, watered it, and it's beautiful now. Don't even know they were there.
Okay, they just threw the fake, well, the fake grass and the straw. They got that far on some of the properties and...
It'll grow up. It'll grow.
Okay.
You'll be fine.
Okay, I hope so.
Happy with what they did in my area.
Oh, good. Good.
You know me, I'll complain.
No.
No.
Chester complained?
Wow. Awesome. Well, thank you, Joanne. And the other one, the new squad cars. I was wanting to make sure that everybody, with, I guess, Rachel, with your guys down at the fleets and Doug and with your guys. I've had experience with one of these, and I was shocked at the amount of knowledge that goes with ownership or working on these type of vehicles, how dangerous they can be, that everybody in your shop best have all the information at their hand and be trained with all this stuff because, I mean, one wrong move could cost a life. And it, even on an accident-related basis, you know, it it's just one wrong move without the proper gloves, the work areas and everything about it. Granted, it's just oil changes and stuff, but if they have to go out on an accident scene to transport one of our cars, the officers have to know how to handle these. I mean, it's it's some scary stuff. And I just, I'm concerned that everybody be trained properly and all the staff down by you and even with your officers, too.
Thousands of electric cars and hybrids out there now, so I mean...
Yeah.
We see crashes all the time with them, and you've got to stand back and wait for the firemen.
Wait for the real heroes, huh? That's what they say.
Getting an electric car.
Yeah, I was just concerned that everybody be trained on it. That's all. Oh, good. They need it. All of them do. Oh, she put on the microphone. No, I got it. As long as they all get trained, I'm mostly... Yeah. That's all.
That's all? Okay.
That was it. I know jumping the cars, too. We don't jump any residents' cars, do we?
Yeah, maybe.
Because it changes when you use the hybrids and the new cars. Okay, that's fine. Perfect. That's all.
Use a battery pack.
Thanks. That's it for me. Sorry.
Okay, I've got one thing to add here. I received a letter from a resident in my district that I have been requested to share with the board and the viewers. Gentleman writes, "Hi, Bill. I would like to say thank you. After 41 years of living in Glendale Heights, my wife and I will be moving by the end of August. I have retired, and we have an opportunity to move closer to our eldest daughter as we age. Before we go, I would like to thank you for helping when we needed it. I would also like to thank the people who maintain Armitage Avenue. Many times, I have witnessed a village worker pull over and pick up a piece of trash along the center of Armitage. That's doing the right thing when it's the right thing to do. I walk at Nazos almost daily and watch the grass cutters go about their jobs. Thank you, grass cutters. A thank you to the city truck drivers who seem to be the only ones doing the speed limit on Armitage. A thank you to the guys who put in my drainage pipe a few years back. Good job. Thanks to the guys who are out in the middle of the night plowing snow so I could be off to work in the morning. Thanks to the police and fire departments who look after us. I'd like to thank community service and the cashiers who always treat me with respect when I visit. A special thanks to the teachers at Hall and Marquardt, where my daughters received a first-rate education. Finally, a thanks to the mayor and board who, in my opinion, care. We will miss Glendale Heights, but the change will be exciting during these troubled times." Sincerely, a resident. And given what's been going on for the past couple of weeks, this is a real pat on the back. Made me feel great when I received it. And I was happy to pass that along to Mike Maron and the mayor, and I'm happy to pass that along to you. So, thank you, a resident.
That was nice.
Okay.
Very nice.
Clark Schmidt, do you have something?
Are you going to make a motion to adjourn?
No, I got a question for Keith.
Okay.
Question?
Keith, these trees that we planted, are we watering them?
I'm having problems here, too. They were, they had the gator bags put on. I believe they got all of them with the gator bags put on, so they were watering.
There was a lot, we have a lot of dead trees. I mean, the people are not even, I mean, these people are not even taking care of them. And I mean, we spend the money, and they're dead.
I can certainly go back out and take a look and see what, if we have some of those. I know that Chuck will do a usual drive-through afterwards. They are under warranty. Certain ones will be able to be replaced, but I will double-check that and make sure that if we're in need of getting some more water out there, we do so.
Okay, thank you, Keith.
Okay, Mayor.
Thank you for sharing that letter with all of us, Bill, because I think it was Mike that you shared it with, and Mike shared it with the village?
Bill's staff, yes.
All the employees. And I heard comments from employees that that meant so much to them that somebody took the time to say, "We appreciate the work you've done, and you've done a good job."
We've got a lot of dedicated employees.
If you could pass that along to the letter writer, it would be very much appreciated. It made their days because usually when something comes in, it's not saying how good everything was. As we all know, it's saying how bad something was. So please, thank the resident.
I certainly will, Mayor. All right, if nobody has anything else, can I have a motion to adjourn? Trustee Pojek?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Executive session now?
Yep.
Yes.
Oh, we have to go back into the open session.
I'd like to call this village board meeting back to order. And we did public discussion of agenda items. And the last thing would be a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss pending litigation and probable or imminent litigation pursuant to Open Meetings Act 5 ILCS 120 slash 2 C11. Trustee Sullivan?
So moved?
Second.
Or do you want me to read this thing?
You don't need to. Did we get a second?
Second.
I guess it was Bill.
Bill. Bill's second.
Okay. Roll call vote.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes. Say yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Okay, Trustee Sullivan?
Oh, yes, I just wrote my name.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Muratato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek, vote aye. Thank you.
We're adjourned.